Okay, we will convene the special city council, the whole meeting with the Batavia Park District. And I'd ask for the clerk to call the roll for the Batavia City Council members.
Here.
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 Okay, so the city attorney advises me, we do have the eight necessary members to form a quorum of the city council so we can proceed. So I'll turn this over to President Callahan from the Park District.
Uh, I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Batavia Park District. Please call the roll.
Riley.
Here.
Coils.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Callahan.
Here. All right.
Very good. First of all, thank the Park District Board for your willingness to come down and meet on kind of short notice here with us as we have this ongoing discussion. I am told, Allison tells me that we've prepared a little presentation, we've got some conversation we want to do here. So you want to, I'll turn it over to you and you can introduce whoever.
Absolutely. Absolutely, no problem. So the city council and obviously the park board requested that the Park District staff and city staff create a presentation regarding the different alternatives for the dam removal that were identified back in 2000. So with that being said, I would actually like to turn the floor over to Rahab.
He's everywhere. He worked very hard on this presentation and he's got all the facts and he's ready to roll.
Thank you.
Dave, maybe you can give him yours for the moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. So a few weeks ago, we had a joint session like this where city council and the Park District Board requested that we present what was discussed back in 2000 because a lot of us were not here. So I went through the presentations, a lot of memos that were exchanged between IDNR, the city, Park District, and put together a small presentation just for education purpose that what was discussed back then. So just to give you a short history of the dam itself, it seems like the original dam, again, Mayor actually gave a good overview of the dam in that joint session, but I'm just going to go through it quickly. Eighteen thirty was, the dam was originally constructed to generate hydro mechanical power for a sawmill here in the city. Then early nineteen hundreds, the dam was replaced with a concrete modified OG shape that we see today. And in the midst nineteen seventies, that west apartment of that dam bridged and the city and IDNR, they tried to repair it, but it was not successful. In nineteen nineties, the east apartment got bridged, which prompted IDNR to investigate how we can repair the dam. And that actually started, they hired consultant to look at what are the alternatives that they have to do with that dam. So to look at the alternatives, they had set some objectives, that what are the objectives that they're gonna go for when they look at the dam removal or dam alternatives? They said safety should be the first thing, it should be a low structure that doesn't result in drowning of people. The flood conveyance, obviously, it's a river, so we have to make sure that we maintain or improve the flood conveyance of the river. Then there was another objective to maintain the upstream pool. They wanted to make sure that the cost effectiveness, it was cost effective to remove or replace the dam. Also, there was big push back then, and still it's there, that whatever we do with that dam, there should be boat passage to allow or promote recreational use of the river. Fish passage was a big issue, that there should be fish passage for whatever structure we are gonna put in, whether fish goes downstream or swim back up upstream. Maintenance, that IDNR was very interested in reduce the maintenance cost of the replaced dam. And depot pond was in the discussion too, that city and Park District and all IDNR, they were interested in lowering the maintenance cost and improve the water quality of the dam. So encapping all these objectives, they looked at different alternatives. And they came up with four alternatives. And I did put the heading this way, that four alternatives plus one, because at the end of all the alternatives and discussion, one of the alternatives that was actually taken is the do nothing option. So it was not an option that IDNR looked at, but this is what ultimately back in 2004 happened. So alternative one, it was labeled as full width whitewater rapid. Alternative two was river right water bypass. Alternative three is whitewater course through the cut. I'll go into details into all that. Alternative four was a small whitewater rapid with depot pond. And as I said, alternative five was do nothing. And I put it as a city option because that is what ultimately happened. So alternative one, here's a picture of what alternative one looked like. You can see that the alternative one was remove the existing dam, but kind of move it northward nine hundred feet and replace it with a whitewater rapid. And to do that, they were also proposing the tip of the peninsula where that senior housing is, that will get connected to the duck island. That way, you will have a new dam nine hundred feet north of the existing dam, and you will maintain the depot pond. And then the new dam will actually provide access or passage of fishes and boats and canoes and all that. So it was take out, take down the existing dam, put a new dam nine hundred feet north, connect the duck island to the peninsula, and maintain the depot pond. That was the alternative one. The question from IDNR at that point was, who is gonna maintain the dam and who is gonna maintain the depot pond? And IDNR took a position that the city and the Batavia Park District will be maintaining the dam as well as depot pond. So they are gonna just take down the existing dam, build a new dam, and then just go away. And the city and Park District will be maintaining it if we chose this alternative. Alternative two was a new step dam in the same location. There will be bypass for canoe and fish around the west apartment. And we didn't go into a lot of details in this alternative because in the conceptual process, IDNR, the design team, and city of Batavia, all of the entities rejected this alternatives because it placed the boats and other recreational traffic close to the retirement community. And then it did require barmen around the retirement community, and it was seen as a negative impact on the river work that was built around that time, that this option was not even went past the concept level. So this alternative was not moved forward at all. Alternative three, that was again, a new step dam in the same location. But the idea of the canoe and fish passages all needed to be then moved through the cut. If you go past the parking lot just north of here, there is a cut there. They proposed that we widen that cut so that the canoes can go through that cut. The problem with that alternatives was that the existing road, the bridges and the pathways that we have around the cut, they all needed to be rebuilt and reconstructed. So this alternative was left it as that if we really go for this alternative, we have to do a lot more investigation and see how much it's gonna cost. So no cost or no further concept plan was investigated after, in this alternative either. Alternative four, which was mostly talked about along with alternative one, alternative four was that we'll remove the full dam with additional refills along the river. So you can see the picture, here you will connect the top of the peninsula all the way to the west bank of the river incorporating the duck island, and that will create a small new island just north of the duck island there. So this was the alternative, and there will be some additional refills along the river to slow down or allow the fish and canoes to go by. So this was an alternative that was heavily talked and discussed. IDNR preferred this alternative. The impact of this alternative was that the river would be reduced from six hundred and eighteen feet as we know today to four hundred and fifty feet. So the surface area would be dropped from eighty-nine acres to sixty-five acres. State said they will remove the dam, they will construct the additional refills, and they will maintain the refills as long as, you know, necessary. But the city of Batavia and park board would need to maintain the ownership and maintenance of the barm and the depot pond. So to keep the depot pond, you needed to build actually pump stations there. So that would require heavy pumps, and a pump comes with maintenance and a lot of cost. And back in 2000, the estimated cost of keeping the water in the pond was eighteen thousand dollar per year. So this was heavily preferred by the city and the Park District. And IDNR also preferred this option. So because we talked about four alternatives, and alternative one and four were mostly discussed, I put together a small table to show that what were the mainly differences or comparisons between these two alternatives. You can see that both alternatives provided, you know, canoe passage, the fish passage provides public safety. The cost estimate back in 2000 was pretty close. The alternative one, which was remove the dam and replace it with another dam nine hundred feet, and alternative four, which is remove the dam completely, they were pretty close, eight point two six million and eight point six two million. The only difference is alternative one, city and Park District will be owning the dam, the barm, the depot pond. And alternative four, city will only own the barm and the depot pond, maintain those. IDNR maintains the refill structures. IDNR preferred alternative four. So what happened? I have found memos and correspondence that started back in, almost towards the end of nineteen ninety-nine to 2004. It seems like after a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth presentation, city council and Park District chose option four, which was remove the dam, construct a barm, connecting the peninsula, duck island, to all the way to the west bank. So that's the option the city chose and Park District chose. I request Bill to jump in whenever he can because I'm giving all this information, reading all the memos and everything. But at some point, after choosing this option, seems like there was a public referendum done in April 2003. And that public referendum actually said, keep the dam. So the residents at large, they chose to keep the dam. And at that point, the project was terminated due to the lack of support. I believe the IDNR was getting mixed messages from the city and the Park District that we are not having a one unique voice, you know, including the residents. So they thought we are not supporting the project, and they went away, I believe in New Yorkville because there was another dam that was falling over there. So that became the priority at that point. So nothing happened, that's why I put that do nothing option. And then in between, you know, from 2003 to 2016, the dam kept deteriorating over the last thirteen years. So what's next? So we have in front of us, the residents of the city and the city council and Park District, all these options that were considered almost fourteen, fifteen years ago, alternative one, two, three, four, five, or there could be a new alternative that we can think about that we can discuss. Sorry. So with that, I'll ask anybody who wants to offer more information that I missed or open for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Sure.
How, I didn't even look at the media, so how, who was behind the, what was the argument?
Citizen-driven, petitioned.
Petitioned? Was there a specific group behind not going to run it compared to a tour?
That was a story passed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Safe for day.
You know, if...
Did I have to have, was there could be another approach?
I suppose there could be. I mean, I think, as I remember some of the history on this thing, there was a couple things that were kind of coming together in 2003. And one was, the Batavia School District was looking at the potential of a significant referendum to add on to Batavia High School, which was the, ended up being the field house and the fine arts center and all the nice things that they did out there, and that was a pretty healthy price tag. And they were just, as I remember, as I remember the timing, they were just starting to have that conversation about doing that in that period of time. And, you know, there was, the economy was still rocking and rolling at that moment. We hadn't had the ultimate crash and burn that we experienced as everybody did, you know, starting in six and seven. And so there was, you know, I think it became kind of a community priority discussion. And then as I remember, the Park District, and you guys should speak for yourselves on this, they had some other ideas of wanting to build a rec center. And, you know, they were trying to put together ideas for a referendum to do that. So there was a lot of conflicting ideas floating around here. And, you know, I remember there was, including myself, there was some reluctance on the part of the city to buy into this whitewater rapid thing, specifically as a retired member of the Batavia Volunteer Fire Department, I was, had serious concerns about encouraging water rafting, whitewater rafting up there, given that it's not a great area to effectuate rescue if somebody goes off and gets into trouble up there. With river rain and the factories and everything else is there, you know, we've got a, we've bought a ladder truck in town with a bucket that we can, can lever over the top of the river, but if you can't get it down there next to the river, that ladder truck's not worth much. So there was a lot of, some significant concern, I think, on the fire department's part about our ability to run and encourage that at that location, given what we felt was a real challenging situation. If, God forbid, somebody went up there and got into trouble whitewater rafting. So we kind of took kind of a dimmer view of that one, as I remember. So a lot of this is, you know, kind of word of mouth amongst the council. Alderman Brown, were you here when this was all going?
I sure was.
You want to make some observations?
Yeah, I'll make some comments. And I agree with you, there was a lot of referendums that were being discussed and such, so obviously you're talking about a lot of money, so the community starts to get concerned and, you know, not, changes always cost money, right? So it's easier to say no. But one of the things I remember, you're right, what you were saying about the concern of the fire department, and if there was a whitewater rafting area there, the concern over the safety of the citizens that would be on it. But beyond that, then, if the dam were to be removed, I really feel as though there was a lot of misinformation that was floating around, and a lot of people that believed that if the dam were removed, that our river would go dry. You know, as the river goes through town, they envisioned the fact that this river would turn into just a little stream. And that's the farthest thing from truth there is. But when people start to get this in their mind, and a group of citizens all start to get together and start promoting the fact that if we take the dam out, our river's gonna disappear, and this great asset that we have, that we're now also talking about how we're gonna preserve, would disappear. So that got a lot of the people out there in force saying, we can't remove the dam. We just can't remove the dam. And IDNR was just steadfast on the fact that they don't repair dams, they don't replace dams. They'll come in and they'll remove the dam, and they'll help us with that whole process, but they absolutely would not rebuild the dam for all kinds of reasons. You know, the fish passage, the boating, everything else. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, the way I remember it all happening, you know, the city, we did have a lot of conversation, there was a lot of public comment on it, a lot of public interest. And for some reason, maybe it's because of the referendums, but for some reason, it just, it failed miserably that the citizen, we said, do not remove the dam.
You know, I would just, you know, also make the observation in today's world right now, number one, the thing I guess really causes me to have some caution on this whole discussion is, is I, my other roles of going to Chicago and sitting there and listening to our friends at the state government talk about how badly funded the state of Illinois is right now, and the debt that's mounting every day in their hands. I don't have a lot of confidence or belief that the state of Illinois is gonna run in here and offer us much support for this thing. I mean, I've heard, I've had people tell me, oh yeah, the state will come in and rebuild this dam. I've never had anybody from the state tell me that, you know, they may want to take it out and forget about it, but I'm not sure there's any conversation in the state government right now about wanting to rebuild the dam. I've had people tell me there is, but I've never had that conversation that I can remember.
Well, my feeling on this, and I kind of raised a red flag probably back about November when Alderman Chancik did also, and, you know, we just have to start having this conversation, and we have to, we have to make plans for the future. And how we go about accomplishing those plans can be discussed along with those plans. But, you know, whether the state comes in and ponies up, if we hopefully get a consensus here from everybody over a direction that we want to go, or whether we end up having to take this on ourselves at some time, we have to have a plan. We've got the depot pond over here that we all know we have to preserve. And we've got a riverbank that we all know we have to start looking at what we're gonna do. So we need to look at this thing separately but together, and we have to come up with a plan, and then we can lobby the state, we can certainly ask for more money. That's another whole story, but we just, that's kind of why I raised a flag back in November where we just, this dam is failing. I sent the email out over the weekend and said, if you have an opportunity, take a walk down there. And you can, you can walk all the way over to where you're within fifteen feet of the other, the east side of the river, and that kind of tells you what's going on. So...
I mean, I think if this conversation is heading us toward some type of a community referendum, I'm gonna have some pause about that because I'm not really confident that that would go very far with, if you threw this out here. I think there's some other things in the eyes of the people in the community that they would say, well, if you're gonna have a referendum, you know, we could certainly probably use an indoor swimming pool and a rec center before we could talk about fixing the dam. I could see that certainly raising its head very, very quickly. And I think also, there'd be a lot of people that we, there's some people that have very high opinions about this, but there's a lot of people who think, you know, we ought to do whatever we can to clear out the Fox River and let it run the way Mother Nature wanted it to run, and so we shouldn't be in there doing a bunch of stuff to interfere it. So, and that was one of the things that got raised when we had that referendum the first time around. So I wouldn't be overly optimistic that you could pass a referendum in this town right now, and I guess as the mayor, I'm the one that should say this, that you could pass a referendum in this town right now to go up there and fix that dam and put it back into the way it's sitting there right now. I just don't see that happening. I don't think the political support is there for that.
Can I just say though, I mean, and I understand that, but I don't know what the solution is either, but I remember, you know, with this here, removing the dam, there's, there were referendums that came out, dam removal, the second bridge downtown across the river, and the rec center. All three good pieces of legislation to move our city forward. And they all failed a referendum through misguided people, through, you know, half-truths that we let happen as elected officials. I don't know how we can get around that, but it's, you know, if we are gonna move forward, we have to keep the truth on its pedestal and push it forward because these mistruths have set our city back on three separate occasions now that was, will gonna be a very benefit to our city. So I just wanted to put that out there, you know, this misinformation that flies around with these referendums, that, you know, we have to combat that somehow.
And, you know, I think that's hard to control. I mean, you, because, I mean, my recollection of the dam issue is very close to the, the public sessions were robust, there was experts, there were many people that attended. It wasn't until each respective board voted that we actually chose an option, that everybody came out of the woodwork and decided that they wanted to finally take their position, instead of trying to help us communicate during the course of the public process, to get a solution that the community could support. And when, we actually had three factions of folks in town. We had a save the dam group, we had a river health group, and then we just had people who just didn't feel like the public should be, or that the municipalities should be involved in the dam at all because it was an IDNR issue. So we had a lot of people kind of taking their own little camps and sitting out by the river making some decisions. And ultimately, you know, the community came out and voted. And as you know with any referendum, and maybe you don't, I've been on the firing line for many of them, you can put your information out, it can be thoughtful and truthful and honest, and people will interpret it the way they want to interpret it, or some people will just fail to take the time to educate themselves on it. But there is a reality to all this. Something's gonna happen, one way or the other. And the alternative is dismal for everybody in the community. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to, you know, set a direction, provide some leadership, and, you know, go through a process of public engagement so that people are at least informed because I do agree that there was a lot of misinformation out there, particularly related to the dam. And it was a lot of scary scenarios people painted that were very, very far from reality. And so, right, and so when people went to the voting booth, they had this kind of fear of what was gonna happen or what they didn't want to have happen, and they voted basically their, you know, based on that. And, you know, DNR was, IDNR was pretty good. And I have to say, I mean, I, they were really good at those public meetings. They were very clear as to what it was gonna happen, how wide the river would be with the dam removed, how much water there would be, what the change in shoreline might look like. It wasn't as if anybody was, you know, saying, well, you know, we don't really know. There was a lot of experts that, there was a lot of testimony, and it just never came to fruition, so.
So, that's the history, now what's the next step?
Well, one question that we had as staff is, what is the current lifespan of the dam? And that was something that the city staff had also asked as well. So one thing that we would need to know is to do a deep dive, no pun intended, but to find out, you know, how many, how far out we're planning. Are we, is this an immediate plan, is this a short term, long term? I think that would help us tremendously, so that way we can make an effective decision.
I think we're one hard winner away from having to make the decision immediately. I mean, if we had really bad freezing thaw and a real ice jam, that side of the dam, the east side of the dam, will disintegrate. I mean, I've been on it, and it moves around pretty good out there at that end, and I don't think it's gonna withstand that. Thankfully, we haven't had really bad winters.
I would agree, Alan. I'm no engineer, but to me, it's one of those things where you could have an act of nature. You know, it could be the ice dam, it could be an eighteen inch rainstorm that, you know, could just wash those few boulders out that are kind of keying that thing in still on the east side, and away it goes.
I think like the Jenga game, I mean, I think there's one piece in there, if it goes out, the rest of it's coming out.
Right.
And then we'll be making the decision, how do we fund it immediately? So I think it's something that we have to, we have to get a plan as quickly as we can get the community support to do it, and then figure out how we're gonna fund it.
If that's believed, then I think shouldn't the first part of any plan be an information campaign to let folks know this? There's a lot of people who still haven't, probably don't even know this dam. Second, they don't know what's happening with the dam. And so, an education campaign will go a long way. If something happens that, and we're starting to go for ways of funding, the first thing that should happen at any time should be educate folks in advance of... The first thing that should happen at any time should be educate folks in advance of, of the meeting, in advance of experts, in advance of referendums, and all that, so let folks know, this is what's happening in your town. This is what's, you know, one of the major assets that we have, this river, there's a dam, it's failing, these conversations that we had. Maybe not even alternative to what the hap, you know, that we talked about, but just, this is what is happening, so that folks can get their mind around the fact that we probably need to do something, so that if something happens, that our educator needs to say, "How?" And both of us will know that.
Well, and I think the biggest thing in my mind is, we have to convince the public that the priority out of all of this is not what we do with the dam or don't do with the dam, is how do we preserve the pond? And that, to me, is the first and the only thing we should focus on, is to preserve the pond, and then, after we get a, come to agreement on that, figure out what we're going to do with the riverside of it.
And that's to educate folks a bit of what that dam does. A lot of people don't know that the dam actually causes this ton effect, even if it's just water. You know, I mean, most folks don't know, even if it's three or four feet deep, they can't do those correctly. So, I think we really need to educate folks as to what's happening with the pond and with the...
Alderman Chancet.
We previously discussed in a meeting, the possibility of a joint resolution, that if everyone at the table generally agreed, that we need to be headed in the same direction, that would at least send a message to the public that we're serious, that we do need to do something. My fear again, is that we've gone thirteen years, and we've been rolling the dice each year. I, I, I do think that we, we don't have more than a few years to do this, so if we can at least agree as a group, that we're heading in the right direction and need to do something about it, then we can take the next steps. I don't know how I feel about another public referendum, because with all due respect, the amount of misinformation that's out there is counter, it goes against why we were elected. We were elected to make the hard decisions. If it means that people are going to vote us all out of office because they think we made the wrong decision, then we're doing our job, and we did what we were hired to do. And this is a tough decision, but I think we knew what the answer was thirteen years ago.
But that was a citizen-led referendum.
Right.
It was not something either public body...
It wasn't binding.
Right, no, the truth.
Well, I was just doing some back of the napkin, you know, eight, eight point six then is about thirteen million now, so... Yeah, I mean, I think a, a driving point here has to be what it would cost to repair, replace that dam, and then ask everybody, "Who do you think's going to pay for this?" I mean, I don't think you can say, "Well, we're going to go get the state of Illinois, and it's a guarantee, they're going to cough up ninety percent of the money." I think, you know, if you're going to put that in Batavia's face, that Batavia better be prepared to pay the huge majority of that cost of that replacement of that dam, if in fact that, that they wanted to, wanted to do it.
I don't think that's a question that we have to answer, because I don't think we're ever going to talk about replacing or rebuilding the dam.
Well, I'm just saying that that's the question...
The only thing the IDNR said, that, that the two heads of water and the DNR head said to us, was that if for an emergency reason we needed to, they would allow us, they didn't say they'd pay for it, they would allow us to temporarily stabilize and repair the dam, until we had a plan and funding to be able to do what we wanted to do with the pond, to preserve the pond, and figure out what we were going to do on the river channel or the dam side of the Fox.
May I take?
I was just going to say, I, I didn't understand what you meant by replace the dam. Did you mean fix it, choose one of those alternatives, or do nothing?
Well, I, you know, I guess I'm still back there in 2003 with alternative number four.
Okay.
But, I mean, you know, that, that referendum that they had, there was people on, as I remember, there were people on both sides of, "Oh, let's save the dam," and then there was other people that said, "Well, I don't want to spend any money," type of a thing. So I, I, I think we've got to get this out there, that everybody understands what the costs of this are going to be to the community if we go in a different direction, other than the direction that we originally put out here in 2003.
Your honor, I think, I, I don't know, we could, I'm going to guess that we probably got a consensus from everybody on the council and everybody on the school board, that, or I'm sorry, the park board, that we want to preserve and maintain the pond as we see it today, correct? If not, even in a better condition. We don't want to see it go dry. So, if, if that's the case, you know, I, I agree, we need public education and everything else, but you have to keep the process moving. You know, I would suggest that we somehow or another come together as the two bodies, and we, we hire a consultant to work with us on the proposal, to do the one alternate where we encompassed Duck Island and ran the berm over to the west side, and come up with, you know, some cost estimates and some schematic designs on this, so we could present some ideas to the public. We've got some ideas on cost to do that. That's really, unless you replace the dam, that's the only way we're going to preserve and maintain the depot pond. So, kind of move in that direction to keep the process moving. And, at the same time, this consultant and both bodies and the public need to be aware that we are also exploring other opportunities as to what we're going to do, you know, but we have, we have to maintain the pond. You know, we, I, I can't imagine that if we preserve the pond by putting that berm around there, that we're just going to turn around and walk away from the existing dam the way it is. We're going to have to take it down, or we're going to have to remove it slowly, as they've been doing when they remove dams. That's part of the cost too. That doesn't need to be done to preserve the pond, but it needs to be done in the big picture. So I think we ought to work as, as consultants, I'm sorry, okay, we need, we need to work with, you know, a consultant to work with us in this right direction. There's a lot of bodies that have to be negotiated with. You've got IDNR, state, you know, IEP, everybody else that has to be consulted with when you do this, and we're not going to do that, it would have to be a consultant that we would have to hire.
Mayor, I just want to jump in now, because I think it's important for everyone to understand, that if the council and park board decide this idea of a berm to save depot pond is the, is the idea you want to pursue, that has to happen in combination with removal of the dam. You're not going to be able to place fill in the floodplain and floodway without compensatory storage or removing the dam. The two have to go together. You cannot do one to preserve the pond and then think you have ten more years to take the dam down. The, the, the bigger picture has to happen at the same time. I think this is important for everyone.
Alderman, Alderman Chancet.
I was kind of jumping more on what Dave was talking about, and I'm wondering what the Park District's long-term visions are for recreation in this area, if you have any. Is there, are you just concerned with preserving the pond, or is there more to what you want to see done on the riverfront?
I think there was a lot of discussion at that time about programming the river, which we don't do. And the biggest issue with programming the river, other than the boat club down, down closer to Phoebe and Parkway, is essentially, that's the only access we have to the river. There's very little access, you know, basically between there and, and going, and moving south to North Aurora. So, there was not a lot of conversation further, once the rapid options were proposed, as things that could happen during the course of the, the dam removal, that could offer more programming opportunities. And to the mayor's point, some safety issues and a lot of dialogue that happened, we never really pursued it, because we, we generally don't do it. And our feeling, right now, at least in, in the last discussion the board had, and I'll let my, my fellow commissioner speak for themselves, but, was that keeping the pond, which is adjacent to our number one park, is the most important thing we can do to preserve what downtown Batavia has become. The program opportunities generally occur around the pond and less within the river. We'd like to consider the possibility of doing that, but with all the commercial development on the east and west sides of the, of the river, I don't think it's really a viable alternative to suggest that we have, you know, active programming in the river, you know, other than Clark Island.
I guess I was wondering for the fut, were there any hopes for the future?
There's always opportunities.
Okay.
But, one thing that we are, I think, pretty clear on, without the depot pond, we lose programming that we already have.
Right, oh, I understand that part.
So, you know, just, just to preserve what we already have is, is important enough, and then to expand on that. I mean, once the, the boardwalk was, was, the whole riverwalk was reconstructed, there were some opportunities there for some nature programming and so forth, but as different plans present themselves, different opportunities for programming will also present themselves. So, I, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, is there long-term plans? Perhaps, but, they would include, certainly include, the depot pond, and if there were any opportunities for other nature type of, of programming, from a berm, from reconstruction of the entire area to help preserve whatever, where they're going to, they're going to kind of naturally create themselves based on what we did.
And this is a really timely, whoa, I'm really close now. This is a very timely discussion, because we're going to be conducting a community needs assessment at the beginning of winter, so, you know, this is a fruitful time to have this conversation, where we can revisit the master planning, the vision for the riverwalk. We have plans, we would love to do paddleboard, paddle boarding classes out in the depot pond, but the depot pond isn't deep enough currently. So, you know, we do have some challenges, so therefore we use the quarry. It's safe, it's chlorinated, people love it. So, um, but, you know, there are a lot of opportunities, like kayaking, you know, we can certainly do that out at Clark Island, and we have, and even the lodge at Laurelwood. But we would also, with the removal of the dam, we would also have to be thoughtful about what the lodge at Laurelwood, Laurelwood Park would look like as well. You know, there, there are a lot of things we need to add into this, it's so multifaceted. We really need to look at depot pond, and some of the other entities that surround it when we're having this discussion. And I would love to actually see a feasibility study, again, to kind of give us that timeline to know what we're looking at, so we can let the public know, you know, what the current state is, you know, and how long we have. We know it's a ticking time bomb, but we just don't know how close we are to it.
Alderman Chancet, do you have anything?
I was just curious if anyone from the Park District had been down to Yorkville recently. We, we talk about riffles, it's actually quite beautiful down there, and there are a lot of recreational opportunities down there. I don't think a riffle is something we should necessarily be afraid of, I think it's something we should actually aspire to.
You know, I actually, sitting here listening to this and looking at, kind of remembering kind of where we ended up and what the community said during that, that campaign, I don't want to be dismissive of their vote, because, you know, there may have been some threads in there of, of people who wanted to do something but didn't like the option we chose. So, and I'm not saying I don't support full dam removal, I guess what I'm saying is, in light of the costs, because it was, at that time, I believe, Mr., Mr. Mayor, that was the most expensive option, was it not?
If I remember.
Yeah. That, that maybe we need to reconsider these options again, in light of the public education session, to the extent that there may have been people who could have supported one of the other alternatives, but just didn't like the one we chose. And not to mention the fact that if there's a price tag attached to it now, we may need to be a little more frugal in our approach to, to have the, the right end result and maintain depot pond. And I just put that on the table for discussion.
It just seems to me that we have a success story so close to us, that it's something we should study.
I mean, to Lucy and Dan's point, I mean, you know, I think demographics in Batavia are changing, and it's the younger people coming in, people with, with healthier lifestyle choices, and, and this would be one of them. And I kayak myself, and it's just people coming from Geneva heading down south, I mean, they don't have to portage out perhaps. It's just something to keep in mind, to see what people are looking for. It's just another recreational facet that we can offer people in our city, and, and take advantage of a great resource, economic resource, the river.
I guess what I think we should go here is to maybe have the council make a motion that we have our staff work with the Park District staff, and try to put together a proposal to have a updated consultation done on this whole subject, so that we're in a better position as far as, as President Callahan just mentioned, the costs of what this is going to be today. I don't think we all have our arms wrapped around it. You know, what really is this, where, where is the state of Illinois? I think I know, but I mean, I think those are all questions that need to be asked, and I think, I think there's willingness on the part of both governments to try to bring somebody in here with some professional expertise, to try to wrap their arms around this and really give us the right answers that we need to have to get this thing final, to a final decision-making point. I don't think right now, tonight, we're sitting here without that key ingredient that we're in a position where we can do this, but I think certainly our staffs can get together and put something together to bring back to us, to both elected bodies, to inaugurate that idea.
Your honor, I'd like to make the motion that we direct our city staff to work with the Park District staff, to work on what it would take to hire a consultant to evaluate the protection of the depot pond and preservation of our river.
Second.
Here we have motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Chancet, that the council direct our staff to work with the Park District staff to develop a, a proposal for a consultant to come in and update us on the thinking of the future of the Fox River and the depot pond, and the future of the dam. Any further discussion? I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Ayton?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
That vote is eleven yes, no no's, and three absents. Turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to mirror the city's motion, to work with, the two, the two entities have their staffs work together to engage a consultant to update the dam study, and provide some additional insights and cost estimates for these two bodies to consider. Motion by Tillman, second by Gray.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gray. Riley?
Aye.
Coils?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye, motion carries.
All right, I think that we have another subject to talk about, is Flag Day memorial? Is that...
We do. We had an opportunity to have a presentation at our last board meeting with respect to the, the memorial for Flag Day, and the park board, it was well-received, and I'll let them speak for themselves, we just have some concerns over, over placement, and I think we have some alternatives. And part of the reason is obviously, you know, this is such a heavily-used location, whether it's city property, Park District property, we view this as a joint cooperative park, if you will, or, or city center. And the, the locations that, that we've seen take up a significant amount of green space. And, one of the, the discussions that I've had with Steve Acilian this evening was, we are in the process of working with the Historical Society to redevelop and expand the depot museum. And as a result of that expansion, there will be some redevelopment on the east side, where the gazebo and the frog, for lack of a better way to...
Bill's frog.
Right? Bill's frog? Is, and, and those are, you know, those are placed on property that aren't, isn't necessarily germane to where they need to be. That we think that, that in consideration of that, that we could also, since we have to redevelop that, that edge anyway, it may be a better location, because that's unused area, that would still be adjacent to, tangent to, largely celebratory for, what's happening here in the Riverwalk area, but not necessarily taking up significant footprint, so that we can continue to have all the festivals and, and ongoings that happen here. That, again, from our surveys, ninety percent of our, our patrons say that this is the number one park that they use. And so we have to be cognizant of the fact that those, our patrons are your constituents, so that's a pretty significant number.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to just change from my own thoughts, that the idea was well-received. The actual design by scope and size, I personally thought was just grossly oversized for the reasons that President Callahan was talking about. It takes up such a large footprint of an area that is, I think, essential to the downtown as far as what our services are providing to our constituents, that this is a major park, a major destination for a lot of our folks. And so to place a monument of such size on an area that is heavily used, I think would be a disservice to a lot of the folks that, that use that park on a, on a regular basis for all sorts of different things. If it's not just hanging out with your family, there's, there's all sorts of activities that go on in that grassy area, and, and so forth around, around the park. So, I think an alternative location, and a different scope, a different size to the, to the original design, would place just as much honor on the, the reason that they're trying to develop this thing. So I think we really need to all take just a look and see what the proposals were, see how it would have affected the, the park, and, and think about perhaps a, a different size, a different location, that would still be able to honor what was being presented.
So, do we have some presentation tonight, or are you just wanting us to react to that, or...
Well, you know... Well, you know, we were the last to see the presentation, so we just wanted to give you an opportunity to hear what our commissioners thought. But, I think it's a great idea. I think there's opportunities and there's a place for it down here. I just think it needs to be very thoughtful so that it doesn't have an adverse impact.
May I just ask a question? Was, John, were you speaking for all the hard work?
No, I don't know if everybody else thinks it's size is too large. That's what I'm saying. This is something that I saw when I saw the presentation and saw the footprint on the grassy area, how signed that monument took up. My first reaction was, oh my, what's gonna happen to all the folks who come down for movies and for watching the park and for, you know, the Windmill City Fest and for R and R I and for other activities that are going on down in that grassy area. Would all be affected when there's other areas and other sizes at the monument that would still give the idea, and like I said, the idea I think is ready. I just don't know if we need to affect a really popular destination with that.
Yeah.
I think one thing is that it's always kind of hard when you're dealing with a group that has a lot of passion behind them, but I think we need to, you know, be respectful of the passion, but it's a project. And we've been a little uncertain with the staff knowing, who do we talk to about the project? Who do we talk to about, for the staff to like talk with the city council and have an intelligent conversation? Does a, is this going to be a national tourist thing that brings in a thousand people a weekend? Well, where are the bathrooms? Is this a local kind of historical thing? All these things are technical issues. It needs a building permit, it needs HPC, I mean, it needs to be critiqued like any other building. And I think one of the good things of this conversation is, we just need to figure out our, and I've had some dialogue with Steve today and tried to find out, you know, is he quote unquote, or he and Austin, are they the developer? And if they are for this group, then fine, we need to have them in, they need to go through our process, we need to talk about this, talk with the Park District people, look at alternative places, sizes, whatever it is, like any other project. And I just think we just gotta get our hands around it a little better, and I think this is a good, a good move towards it. And if we could just engage in that, or some other people could engage in that dialogue.
Well, and to piggyback on what Bill said, you know, the city has always been the Park District's thought partner when it comes to the Riverwalk. And we've always jointly programmed that area together. You know, look at the big, beautiful pavilion, performing arts pavilion at the Pigbon Center, we did that together. We've always been synchronized. We've always done this in step, so it makes perfect sense for, you know, the park board and city council to have this conversation together.
I agree wholly. I mean, I just think it's good to keep the discussion alive and keep moving forward. I told Steve, I love the design, I like the size of it. But, you know, hearing another opinion on it, I mean, everything can be negotiated and discussed and come to something that we all will be proud of when we come to fruition. So, I think this is excellent to be discussing it and continue the discussion.
Are we ready tonight to talk about, does somebody have a presentation you wanna make, or we just wanna continue this on to another meeting, or?
Well, actually, I was hoping that we could come to a philosophical consensus on location, because I know that a lot of park board members and staff, too, really love the concept of it being an extension of the museum campus. But certainly, you know, if we're gonna be engaged in dialogue together and this is gonna be a joint decision.
Do we have a drawing or anything, or?
There is.
Oh, of the current, not the.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just think it's kind of premature.
Okay.
With all due respect, and especially because I think the Flag Day people need to sit here. And, you know, it could be, what if one of, what if the, one of the technical things, and you're the architect, you're the architect, what if, what if the only way it works out over there is that part of the circle ends up being a retaining wall because it's next to the river? I think that this is just premature, and I think this, two staffs should be meeting with the Flag people themselves and brainstorm and then come back to the bodies as a whole. And we understand what you're saying, because I understand, I just don't think it's quite.
I agree, John, and I think the idea, what's to bring our thoughts to the council, that, you know, we've seen the presentation, and that we ask some thoughts, like, break into dialogue with the city and park district, and then come up with the best placement, the best idea, the best size, everything for, or yes or no, the entire idea. But as a group, because this destination is so important to both the city and the park district, I think they deserve both, both words here to talk about. But I agree, I think we should have, have the Flag Day folks involved in our.
Almanet, Chance.
To be honest, Mr. Tillman, I'm actually kind of ecstatic that you tapped the brakes on this project. It is one of the most innovative, amazing things I've ever seen, but I would agree with you. Outside, it is way too large. To think about maintenance costs, there was discussion of an endowment. This is gonna be a multimillion dollar endowment to maintain something as big and gorgeous as this. It doesn't necessarily mean that every amazing, beautiful Batavia thing has to be parked next to that river. I believe we have a River Street that's in the process of expanding north during the time that we're raising money to build this thing right, to put it in a place where, to Bill's point, there are bathrooms for the thousands of people who are going to come and visit it from all over the place. Thank you for tapping the brakes so we can do this project right, and respect Steve's vision. Thank you.
So, where, we wanna put something out here a couple months away, or what would you like to do?
Yeah, I think it, I guess I defer to staff to how long they think it might take. Well, at least one person may be here, but as to how long they might take to just have another discussion with the Flag folks. Your Honor?
I'm excited to get to work with the new city administrator, and I will gladly coordinate efforts with Laura and the talented city staff and my creative and talented park staff.
So, September, would that be?
I mean, I think we should probably give ourselves a date certain that we're kind of obligated ourselves to have you guys back down or whatever and have some further conversation about this. So, I don't want it to sound like we're letting it, sweeping it our way into the closet for a year or something. We need to.
September 6th, the first COW meeting.
Your Honor, I think before, there's a meeting between the staff or between the council and the Park District on this again, there should be a meeting with the Flag Day Committee, because there is a Flag Day Committee, and the committee should decide at that point who's gonna speak on their behalf and meet with the two bodies, as Bill just suggested. Who's the developer? Who's the one that's gonna go to the HPC and be their point person? Maybe it's Steve, maybe it's Austin, maybe it's the both of them, I don't know, that's fine, I don't care. But right now, we don't have that established. Do we, Bill, when you asked that question today?
I mean, did I?
Yeah, do we, did Steve say who it is, or?
I think Steve and Austin are kind of energetic people. I'll have to check back with, I'm sure there's any suggestions we'll need to check back with, audio wired, I don't know.
I mean, I just think we need.
I'll Steve first, we will go Steve first and then move it up to him.
I think September 6th would be good, and I guess we would just ask that the committee come and give a presentation to the joint, for the joint meeting.
All right. You know, I would just offer up, obviously, I had the opportunity here in the last couple weeks to participate in almost everything we did down here Windmill City Days in some form or fashion, so I was here quite a bit of the time. And while I was here, there was, I believe, six Batavia, or no, three Batavia High School class reunions going on that weekend. And so, I've been here so long and having lived here all my life that there were many of these people who were in those classes knew me, and I became the target of their comments. But I wanna tell you, it was really a nice experience because repeatedly, kind of what Commissioner Tillman said the last time, everybody that came, and many of these people didn't live in Batavia, they were living in, you know, Grand Rapids, Michigan, I remember one, and there was another one from Austin, Texas, and all these people who had lived in Batavia and grown up here and gone to high school, many of them graduating forty, forty-five years ago, are, you know, coming here and they're seeing me and they're saying, you know, and kind of the consensus of the comment was, you know, when I left here, this down here was a dump. This was just a trash heap down here. And now, I don't know what you people did here, what magic wand you waved, but you've turned this into a garden, and here's two or three thousand people gathering down here on a Friday night, having a good time and celebrating and doing their thing. And this has really become kind of the coming-together place for Batavia, and it's beautiful because it's right here in the center of the town, it's right on the river, it's right equally between the east side and the west side, and everybody comes together, and you got a pedestrian bridge that walks over to River Street, and you can go over there and, you know, we take our hats off to everything that the city and the Park District have done here because you really turned this place around in a positive vein. One guy told me he had been to his wife's class reunion three weeks ago at, I'll not name the city, he told me, in southern Illinois, and she walked out of there almost in tears because of how downhill the place had gone in the forty years since she was there. And he says, you know, he come to Batavia, he says, I'm pounding my chest out, walking out of here about how great this looks down here and what you've done to program this downtown and make it such a gathering point for people in the community. And I remember at the last meeting we had, Commissioner Tillman said about, this was the place in your survey that everybody said they really liked to resonate to. This was kind of the coming-together spot. And I think that plays well, and, you know, the idea that we can build this Flag Memorial down here in some form, I think would just add to that whole ingredient of how good this is, is in the opinion of people. But I agree, you know, there's probably some need for refinement and reconsideration as to how we do it. But I think at the bottom line here, we're onto something that's pretty good. And this is comments coming to us from people that don't live here anymore but lived here forty years ago, and they come back here and say, whoa, this is, you've done okay here with what's going on in this place. So, our hats off to everybody, and some people that are no longer even on this earth were involved in that decision-making that got us to this point. So, this is something that needs to be shared with a lot of past city council, mayors, park district commissioners, park district directors, because there was a lot of people that had their input into this thing to get it to where it is, but it seems to have been something that a lot of people are now taking great pride in. So. All right, let's set up September 6th, we'll all meet back down here for another conversation.
So, we will let you get on with your evening, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Foil, second by Tillman. All those in favor, signature saying aye. Aye, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Almanet Brown, you wanna make a motion to adjourn the committee meeting?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adjourn the committee meeting.
Second. Move by Almanet Brown, second by Almanet Ryan. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.